Mayor, we are ready to start the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paula. Well, remind you to read mute again. Thank you, Paula, for setting this up and for Tim and staff of putting us all together. It looks like we have about sixteen people on the conference call with us. So I ask for everyone's patience if I if I make a full pause, we try and conduct this meeting. But let me begin by again, welcome everyone. It's Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty. This is the Cottonwood Heights City Council Work Session. Again, my appreciation for everyone's participation during these challenging times and awkward times, and we hope you're all feeling well. And if we have anyone online, do you know if we have anyone online that can on this in addition to those signed into the conference?
Mayor, I think that they, Paula, why don't you address that?
No, no one is allowed into this meeting unless I accept them in, but it's being recorded and posted to YouTube tomorrow. Or as soon as we're done here, I'll send it to Tim Berry for him to post it.
Okay, so people cannot listen to the audio. All right, that's good to know.
But it's being broadcast, correct?
That was my question.
Yes, it's being broadcasted into Mixolar.
Okay, great.
The audio, the audio on.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that was my question if it's being broadcast. I'm sorry I didn't make that clear. Yeah. All right, well, let's get started. Again, welcome everyone. And let's begin. We've got a lot of things to discuss. And let's start with our staff reports. And I'll turn it over to Tim to talk about the our efforts with the coronavirus. And also, we have our Assistant Emergency Manager Julie Satch will join in. So Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to go over a lot of the information that I provided in the packet with the letter. And I'll be as brief as possible with this and then allow Julie to add more of the side of the emergency management and what efforts are happening there. I want to first express appreciation to all of the staff and their efforts during this time. It's not an easy time. And and I really appreciate our executive staff and and all of our staff in in dealing with some of these things and still working hard and trying to do their best. You're probably aware, I know you're aware, on March sixteenth, we declared emergency here in Cottonwood Heights. And that was declared by myself, the city manager, which is our process. Tonight, we're going to have the council have consideration of that declaration and extending that beyond the time period that was stated in the declaration. We move forward with that. At the same time, I gave a directive to each of the executive staff members, department heads, to really evaluate and have forethought in the budget and spending process that we go through. And I gave direction on limiting spending, travel restrictions, limiting overtime and additional hours on an as needed basis as we evaluate that. We pulled back on our capital spending and then purchase limitations were made as well, along with hiring limitations and then any grant funded projects, we would continue to move forward on those. We also implemented some modifications to our city operations. Basically, we have one point of contact, which is has a buffer area, which is a glass area. We're open nine hours a week only, and we process applications, plans that come in, and then provide just basic services. We haven't had a lot of people come in at this point. And like I say, I feel good about the buffer element that we have with the glass and other precautions. We also are answering the phones from eight to five, Monday through Friday each week. It is routed to our staff via their cell phones, and then they route it to the appropriate staff as well. So we're continuing with that. In addition to that, our police and fire personnel, our police and public safety, they are implementing some things. And I think Julie will address that briefly. But we, safety is such an important element of what they do on their day to day efforts. And Chief Russo has implemented some elements to really focus on protection of our our public safety personnel, our public, public works personnel as well. And we have implementation measures in there on doing limited work on streets and roads, and also emergency aspects related to that as well. And then on the building inspection side of things, there are some modifications that are made with that and limitations on going into certain or going into residential remodels. And all of that is outlined in the communications I provided to you. Another big focus, and I'll be brief here, is our communications. We're trying to get information out regularly on the county health order. As you know, that was issued on March thirtieth. We're enforcing that in our community. Chief Russo and Julie and and Assistant Chief Brenneman can talk a little bit about that in just a minute. But we are enforcing that and really striving to communicate regularly. You're aware, our newsletter went out last week and provided information on the health order and on other things that our residents can do to protect themselves and their families, and also to to curb the spread of coronavirus. We're constantly trying to communicate to our employees on ways that they can enhance their well being. That's outlined in my memo. I won't go through that. But we're trying to buoy them up and keep them focused on doing things to keep themselves safe. In addition to that, I do want some input for a minute with you on our events. We've been talking a lot with our our event staff, Anne Etchell and Paula have been a big part of this. Obviously, some of our events we've canceled. Let me just highlight some of the things related to that. Our photograph show is still up at City Hall, although basically, people are not coming in to see the displays. We're hoping to have a award, display them on Facebook and having awards provided through via Facebook and social media. Our Matilda musical, we're still on a hold mode on that. We could do some of the auditions as this moves forward with videos coming in from people rather than having in person additions, auditions, excuse me. But we need to make a decision fairly soon on whether we're going to cancel that as well. We really need to know by May twentieth at that point on whether we can move forward with that. And so that we're playing by ear. But it's likely that if things continue that they will, that will be canceled as well. And there is also the potential of moving dates back on that. Utah Wind Symphony, that that event is canceled in May. Our Easter egg hunt is canceled. And then our Butlerville Days, we have talked with our committee and received input from them. They all agree that early June would be the the cutoff date. So if we decide not to move forward with Butlerville Days, that that would be the cutoff date. I'm kind of looking at where things are at right now, feel that it's something we may not do. But I wanted your input on that and see what you thought and counsel a little bit on what you think we should do with that. So I would like that input. And if you want to give that now for just a minute or two, that would be fine. And then I want to turn some time over to Julie to talk about the emergency side of things and our public safety.
Okay, comments from the council?
I spoke with Anne about Butlerville Days specifically this afternoon. I think we're going to have a lot more information come June first. And I was actually impressed that the committee feels that they could actually get the event on and going with that short of a timeframe. And so I told her I like the idea of at least planning for it initially. And, you know, they all understand we may pull the plug, we may have to cut back on a couple of the activities or things, but if things are looking good at the beginning of June to still be able to do it. I thought that was actually a fairly close date, considering that's only about six weeks before it actually has to happen. But if the committee says they can do it, I think that they can do it. And I would, you know, I think we'd get to a final decision there or excuse me, then.
One of the questions I have is, it's not so much just the committee, is that do we have contractual obligations that require signatures and approvals? And if that gives us sufficient time if we wait all the way till June?
Anne indicated that, yes, the one she's the only people that she has not been able to communicate with right now is the carnival. But all of the other vendors have understand kind of what's going on, and they're just waiting for a decision. So I got the impression from her that that wouldn't be an issue. We could still probably get the the contracts and stuff signed. The only thing that she said would probably be an issue there would be with the float. Where we could, if we started now, we may still end to the end. So we may miss some of the other cities parades. But we could get it for the rest of the season, or another option would be postpone it completely this year. Do something a little bit different with the parade. We wouldn't probably have as many other cities coming to to our parade if we're not going to theirs. But just postpone the that full budget into the next year and just not have one this year.
And that is what she's communicated to me too, so I can verify.
I can say I did a survey of our Butlerville Days obligations a couple of weeks ago and sent the memo to Anne that I think she's relying on. But we would have to get the contracts in place fairly quickly if there's going to be a decision to go ahead, because at this point, we don't have some of the key things done. We have the contracts drafted, but luckily, the city had not approved them yet. That would include the carnival and the custom, custom events, the inflatables and and I think also the fireworks we have not finalized yet. So anyway, we would need to push all those contracts through fairly quickly if the decision is made to go ahead. And I think we would need to amend those contracts that had been, you know, there were points to be approved to include a easy out for the city if pandemic comes back or doesn't end when we think of mine.
I have a question for Scott Torgas. I know yesterday when we were talking about our budgets, the revenues showed forty thousand, forty one thousand or so for Butlerville Days. What, what, what is the net net on Butlerville Days? Is it just zero? We spend as much as we pull in? Can you just remind me that?
Excuse me, I don't have everything here, but we, the city puts in a net of about, and I don't have that report sitting in front of me to look at it, about forty to fifty thousand dollars that we contribute towards that. And then so the revenue portion of that's about forty one thousand. And so the expenditure portion would be near a hundred, near a hundred thousand, ninety to a hundred thousand, somewhere in that range. And so that's kind of how it goes in terms of revenues and expenditures.
Sorry, so so we spend sixty thousand on the event. We spend a hundred thousand, we get forty back. So we spend sixty?
Yeah, but we have to, from a budget perspective, we have to budget the hundred thousand for expense, and then the forty one thousand roughly comes back to us in the form of revenues. But yeah, the net cost is about sixty.
Thank you.
I agree with Tim that I think it's going to be pretty likely that Butlerville Days will not be able to proceed based upon a myriad of reasons, which include participation, concerns, planning, contracts. But I'm, I'm more than willing to give it another thirty days. I'd rather not wait till the first of June to decide. I think we need to decide by the first of May. That'd be my position.
I guess we'll get into the budget later, but sixty thousand dollars in the budget, the next year's budget could mean a lot of money. So I would agree with the mayor, waiting till May and no further would be prudent.
All right, any other comments, questions on what's happening with the coronavirus, coronavirus or COVID nineteen?
Mayor, I would like Julie to, she had a few things to add to this as well.
You're on, Julie.
Can everybody hear me? Okay, Chief just wanted me to go over a few of the things that we've done to just dealing with the the COVID, some of the internal procedures that we have put in place on the PD side. They've, we've taken quite a few steps as far as protection for the officers and the staff. All of the officers and the staff are now recording temperatures when they come on duty. We keep track of all of all of that so that we know where everybody's at every time they check on. The, we've also secured disinfectant and sanitizer, and we're constantly sanitizing all of the surfaces, all of our gear, the officers' cars. We have it dispersed throughout the throughout the department, and officers have, they carry sanitizer in their cars. The PPE, the chief has issued orders for just following the CDC guidelines for all of the officers to follow the level one. So they're now going to wear masks and stuff when they come in contact with the public. They all have been supplied with a variety of of everything. They have gloves, masks, the Tyvek suit, the disposable dust cover. They have protective covers, face shields, safety glasses, all of that gear. And then some of the contingency plans with staffing. The chief developed an exposure plan kind of based on the guidelines that are being followed by Unified Fire and the Department of Health. And it does, he sent that through the department. And then the support staff has been put on staggered shifts and working from home, you know, kind of a combination of the two. And Candy Terry, she's the record supervisor, the support staff supervisor, and she kind of coordinates the workloads and the schedules and make sure that everything's operating the way that it should be. The patrol in in the event that things get to a point where we are lacking personnel, or, you know, if we do have some of our officers come down sick and we need to fill gaps or whatever, we'll go to extended shifts, we'll go to longer shifts, and that's already set in place. We're not at that point and at this time. And then the state and the Fraternal Order of Police have kind of rallied and supported childcare in the as the work schedules have all fluctuated and everybody's kind of adjusting to the whole COVID situation. And then as far as communications, Chief Brenneman and myself are in contact constantly. We monitor, there's several different, there's a task force that Salt Lake Valley has put together with the governor and the Health Department, the Unified Fire, they have a bunch of different people from agencies that all get together, and then they send reports to us daily. We also do a check in daily with Salt Lake Valley, all of the emergency managers in the valley. There's the PPE stuff, we're constantly monitoring supplies. We check the supplies on hand. Right now, we're doing good. We're, we have everything we need so far. That's all that I can think of offhand. Is there anything, any questions? Is there anything I can answer?
How is it having our receptionist located over on police side? Does that caused any problems or concerns? Has that gone smoothly?
I don't think so. As far as for us, the staff over there, it's been, it's been fine. And I, hopefully, it's convenient for her. She's had to do a little bit of walking back and forth. Just because she's out of her area, if there's something she needs from, you know, her workspace, but I think that it's working okay.
Okay, any questions of Julie? One question to the council is that, you know, we as a city now are opening only nine hours per week for walk-ins. Some cities are not opening at all. We have the opportunity to share the police reception area, which is behind a barrier. So it seems to be working well. Any concerns, questions with continuing that same practice?
Have we had any feedback or complaints from the public?
Um, not that I'm aware of. Nothing that I'm aware of. I know concerns, of course. We've had, you know, all kinds of of concerns from everywhere, just I assume the same as all over the planet. But complaints, I don't, I don't, not that I'm aware of.
Mike Johnson, how is it working for people to submit plans or get permits and things? Has that facilitated that?
Yeah, actually, we were set up prior to this to accept plans and schedule inspections and distribute plan reviews completely paperless. So our process has not changed at all.
That was my question is who is, who is coming in? What, what are the main reasons people are coming in?
To the police department or?
Well, into the city, in the city in general, I guess.
Um, on the city side, I probably would need someone else to answer that. On the police department side, typically, we would have people coming in to pick up property and evidence, people coming in wanting fingerprints, background checks, good conduct letters, interviews, anybody, you know, witnesses, people filling out statements, filing reports. But since the kind of the onset of all of this, the public really has been very limited. We haven't had a great deal of people coming in. We've had phone calls, and the officers are still, they're still busy. But as far as walk-in public, we haven't had as much.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
We can, I can.
Yeah, let me address that. We haven't had, as Julie said, a lot of, a lot of foot traffic. I was talking to Mike Johnson today. We, we, it's on Mondays, we're open for just a few hours on Friday. And we get some that are coming in for plans, some permits and to pay that, as well as some notary public services. Wednesday's a little bit busier. We're open for two hours at that time. So in general, that's been what the majority of the the walk-in traffic has been. Like I say, we have the buffer area. I've talked with some other cities, and a lot of the cities that have closed struggle a little bit more with having a buffer area with a glass reception area. But that's not all of them. But anyway, that's, that's a little bit of what we've received, but not a lot of complaints that I've heard.
Okay, Chief Russo, I see your hands up on my screen. So you have a comment?
Yeah, I want to follow up on the question that was posted, Julie. I will tell you that crime in general, a lot of stats, you know, don't necessarily reflect it. I would tell you that our calls for service are down probably thirty or thirty-five percent overall. Noticeably, the radio's been silent. We haven't had, obviously, there's no one on the road, so we're not getting that accidents with injury accidents. Many of the other crimes have seen a substantial dip with one exception, and that is domestic violence and family fights. I think when people are cooped up at home and they can't get out, they can't recreate, and that number goes up, and it has gone up. In fact, their their calls at homes that you wouldn't necessarily otherwise think that we would have that call for service. So those have gone up. The officers are all healthy. We have put the PPS in place. As far as complaints, we really haven't had any. The only one that I recall are is one on the officers, they felt like they should be using the six foot social distancing. So we're having them wear masks whenever they're engaging with the public. And when they can use the six foot rule, they will. But obviously, the type of work they do doesn't always conform to that sort of distancing. That said, we haven't had any other complaints. We get a lot of complaints of people saying that there's mass gatherings and people in the parks or at homes or at various places, and we respond to each and every one of those. But as of yet, and Paul can correct me or Julie, I, I don't think we've substantiated a single one. I don't think we've had a single one where there's been too big gathering with one exception, and that was a wedding that was in someone's backyard. But other than that, I don't see that there's a problem. People are pretty well self enforcing, and we're happy about that. Any questions?
Thank you, Robbie. I wonder if.
I have a question about that. Sorry. Robbie, I also spoke to Officer Potter, and he gave me some of the same information you just shared. I appreciate that. Do you, what, because I haven't seen the plans that you've put in place, what, what happens if the peak ends up going longer, say into June? And you do see some positives that come in for for the officers? Do you what is the plan if you needed to have some enforcement from, I mean, where would you get them? Would, would people work longer? Has there been any thought into if we're not as busy now, having, you know, staggering shifts? I don't know. What, what, what are sort of your contingency plans if things go the wrong way?
That's a fair question, and all the above is the answer. So I communicate weekly with other police chiefs and the sheriff, and we've all agreed to share resources. So that may mean that we end up in Sandy or Draper and UPD helping them out if they get overrun with the virus. But, you know, we can go to twelve hour shifts. Paul is working with EOC, and I think they was, they're, they're going to put some of our members, if they get exposed or they show symptoms, they can actually put them in hotels and quarantine them there so that we don't risk putting them back with their families. But we, again, we, we've, we've thought about that, and we will change shifts, and we'll share resources with everyone in the valley. But at the end of the day, we're going to make sure that the business of the, of the day is done throughout the city and the valley. And I don't know that anyone's shown any some, any positive results for officers yet. I think the jail told me today they had seven in the jail, and I think Rose, he told me that Sheriff Vera told me meant that she had one or two in UPD. But other than that, I don't know that it's become a problem yet, but it could. And we don't know how bad that could get. But UFA put out a great flow chart on what to do, and if this happens in scenario A. Um, but UEFA put out a great uh flow chart on what to do and if this happens in scenario A and B and who's gonna be quarantined and for how long and what true exposure is, uh, and we'll follow those guidelines. I, I think the, the best rule of thumb is to avoid those situations and um protect the officers. We have the, the Tyvek suits that they can wear. Uh, fire goes into any scene in their, um, their protective gear before we do. Uh, if, if we think that it can be contaminated, the officers wear masks, we have the hand sanitizer tigers. Um, we, um, you know, we have showers here, extra change of clothes. Um, so we were taking every precaution and so far, I think it's working. I hope, did I answer your question okay?
Sorry, it's hard for me to unmute quickly. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. I know Paul, Bradman, you, you have a comment.
Yeah, Mayor, just to expand on what Robbie said as far as alternative housing and uh for officers, should there be a need, the county task force has put together a couple of hotels, one on each end of the valley that allows us, if we have somebody at a, one of our residents that's immunocompromised and we don't want to send an officer who may or may not have been exposed home, they'll house that officer in that housing uh for a period of time, and that's fire and police. So they're looking forward, leaning forward on those types of activities, which is very helpful. It puts our minds at ease. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was one of the things we have done as a emergency management team is we're forwarding information to Tim Berry and and Mike Johnson about uh opportunities for business to help with their recovery. So we've all seen some of the information about, you know, uh loans, et cetera, that are available. We try and push all of that information out as it becomes available to Mike's side of the house. I know Sherri's pushing it out to our businesses too.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh, Riley, you know, I'm curious of how this is impacting our two fire stations. Can you maybe give us a quick verbal summary of where things stand?
Yeah, so I've been doing, I've been looking at some of our statistics and it looks like year to date, so if we go from January, sorry, noisy dog. If we go from January one to April first, we've had a thirty-seven, thirty-seven different, I guess, drop in calls. So this year we're at four eighty-nine. For last, yeah, sorry, last year at four eighty-nine, this we're at four fifty-two. So we've seen a little bit of a decrease in call volume as well. So we dropped thirty-seven calls in the four months, you know, this first four months of the year. So we're kind of experiencing some similar where there's not as many people out and about. So we feel like, like Chief Russo said, there's less traffic accidents, less things happening out and about recreational wise, especially the canyons and those general areas. So we've seen it drop in calls and a lot of those are EMS calls. We, we feel like a lot of the people are complying with that stay-at-home order and they're not as active. And so I think that has a part to do with it. Um, kind of an interesting statistic, we've had, I believe with today's numbers, we've gone on about two hundred and forty calls that had a potential of COVID interaction, which exposed about eleven hundred personnel, so over the last three weeks. And we've had twenty-seven people who have gone out with COVID-like symptoms. Um, out of those twenty-seven people, we've had one person test positive. And that one was probably related to a vacation that that individual had taken early in the month of March. So we, we played it safe and anybody who gets a COVID test that's positive, we're just gonna treat it as if it happened at the workplace. So that way we can put them on administrative leave and kind of protect their, their leave balances. But it's, it's been a little bit tricky. We, we've been doing a lot of internal tracking, making sure that we're staying on top of every call we go on that has a potential to be COVID. And it's been, it's been very interesting. Uh, the crews are doing a good job, especially there in Conwood Heights. We've had, I believe we've had I wanna say, last time I checked, I think we've had one or two come out of Conwood Heights that had a COVID positive. But those are the results we're getting from the health department. Um, a lot of people are getting tests and they may not be getting reported or a lot of people aren't getting tested at all who have it. And so there's a lot of numbers out there that may not be a hundred percent accurate. You see all the statistics. So that's something that we wrestle with and just knowing that, you know, any call we go on, there's a potential for it to be related to COVID, so we just have to be extremely cautious. Um, PPE's been a big concern. We've been trying to monitor the use of PPE by limiting the amount of personnel who interact with the patient. Um, we had, we, we were fortunate enough to have been prepared through a couple of these scares with H1N1, swine flu, the bird flu, and we, we had quite a few things on hand already. But even with us, I mean, a good example is we had twenty thousand masks on hand. And in about three weeks, we've gone down to about ten thousand. So we've used or issued or shared half of our stockpile in just three weeks. And so that's kind of a, shows you how demanding this can be and how much PP you go through on just, you know, a couple thousand calls. So pretty interesting overall as an organization, but we're tracking pretty close. We're working hand in half the county. Um, I'm in there every single day, kind of checking in on what the county has going on and then I'm managing that. We have a type-three kind of incident management team for UFA that I've been kind of overseeing that manages a lot of our responses and the policies, procedures, and the things that we're dealing with. So it's been a very insightful. And the county's kind of forecasting a trend, the, the peak that they're looking at is now moving towards the last week of April, even the first week of May. So originally it was April twenty-first to twenty-third, they're expecting to see a pretty, I won't say significant, but a larger spike in COVID calls, now they're pushing it back to May. Um, they're attributing a lot of the success to social distancing. So a lot of the metrics they're seeing is proving that social distancing and the, the kind of restrictive orders the county's put in place have been very productive in dropping our number as compared to other like-sized cities and counties. So that's been kind of a promising thing that they've seen, but there's still a lot to be determined. It's, it's such an unknown. But I feel like the data we're getting is very accurate, so.
All right, thank you, Riley. Scott, you had a comment.
Uh, question, uh, on a, on a medical call, what does that actually look like for the uh person who called in if they're, for, for whatever, whether it was COVID or not, I'm assuming you, is that you send one guy in or two guys in initially that are fully in protection suits and then they call in other help or, I mean, what does it look like if I called and said, I have a problem?
So what we're doing is initially it all starts with dispatch. So dispatch is gonna ask a series of very direct questions that involve the signs and symptoms of COVID, like shortness of breath, a cough, um sore throat, and they're gonna kind of decide if that person's criteria is rise to COVID-like symptoms. And what they'll do is they'll just in the narrative, they don't dispatch it over the radio, just to kind of maintain some privacy, but on our CADs, our mobile computers, they'll just let the crew know that, hey, this person is exhibiting COVID-like symptoms. When the crew arrives, what they'll do is they'll have one crew member who's fully PPE'd. They'll go to the front door and that PP consists of a mask, eye protection. Uh, sometimes it'll be a gown just because of the droplet concerns that come from COVID. They'll knock on the door and what we're gonna ask people to do is if they're able to, come to us instead of us having to go inside the house. And then if, if the patient's well enough to come to us, we'll do a really basic assessment of the front door with a temperature. We'll ask them a few of those follow-up questions that can help us determine if it's more likely to be a COVID uh related response. And then once we determine that, based off of the answers we get, the general impression of the patient, we'll send in more crew members to assist or just one additional crew member to provide kind of that two-person contact with the patient. Um, and it, it varies on everything. If you were to call nine-one-one and you just don't feel well, that's gonna be our general approach. If it's a car crash or something else that's more significant, we're, we're gonna be a little less, I don't wanna say cautious, but we're gonna, we'll dress down a little bit in the PP. We'll still have a mask on. We'll still have eye probe gowns and other things that we wanna conserve, we won't be using. So we wanna make sure our citizens know that we're, we're still gonna show up no matter what happens. Um, the only time that that may change is if we start seeing an increase in call volume that we can't keep up with. We might be getting authorization from the state Bureau of EMS to allow us to kind of like law enforcement does, will priori prioritize our calls. And if they're not showing a life-threatening sign or symptom, they'll be encouraged to stay at home, contact their physician, or report to a testing facility where they can be tested for further symptoms. So far, we haven't seen that and I don't feel like we're even close to that. That's a little ways off for us, but that's kind of our general approach with these calls right now.
All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, uh, the clock is moving quickly. Any final discussion or comments regarding the uh virus efforts from the city and our first responders?
I guess, this is Christine again. I put a little sidebar chat, but I think it's really important to have clear communication right now. I, I noticed in the immediate release that we included in the newsletter, everybody received it, there was a sentence in it that I found to be I, I, I read it and I understood things differently than what we wrote and, and maybe what was written is correct. You could read over on the sidebar under my chat what was written there, but I can read it as well. It said, "As a city, we choose to follow both the governor's directive and the intent of Salt Lake County's order." I, that is very unclear to me because I thought that the Salt Lake County order ordered all of our residents to follow that strictly. But when I read it and I see it, we're gonna follow the governor's directive and the intent. I'm not an attorney, but when I read that, I somehow think that that's not clear. And I, I just wonder with the importance of communication, if, if we're sending things out, should we be sharing those with the council before they're sent out to make sure that enough eyes are getting on things that we're sending clear, direct communication? That's just a general question, but I, I do think it's important that we're, we're clear and consistent with our messaging.
The only, the only thing I would say on that, we do send the newsletter out to you and let you look at it. We don't usually get a lot of comments, so I would encourage you to provide those comments.
This was not the newsletter, this was the insert to the newsletter, backside. So I don't know if I have any support from anybody else, but I think, and Tim, I think I shared another, another piece of information that was sent out to our citizens that I felt was unclear as well. I just, I think we need to be careful not to move too quickly, and if we're gonna move quickly, we need to get more eyes on it and make sure we're clear. It's too important. The rules are very clear. The county rules are very clear.
I, I, I mean, my, my only comment there is I, I, I guess I didn't, I didn't have that interpretation of it. I figured that we were the intent of the governor's orders to stay home, and that's what I think most people are trying to do. There's obviously, there'll always be some that won't. Um, that's a, that's a different take on it that um I didn't personally get, but I've had my stuff edited enough by my wife to know that, um, I mean, I, I can, I, I can see your point, I guess. Um, it, it depends on the expedience here, the, how, how fast it actually needs to get out.
I think the point is well taken, uh, because the, the governor's uh directive is not an order and the county's uh, uh, health department is an order which is mandated. So there is some need to be very sensitive and clear on that type of communication. I think sending all communication out to the council obviously is not necessary. But if it's highly sensitive things, uh, I would leave it to Tim to use his good judgment. That's the job of the city manager. Uh, but uh, I think uh, the point is well taken to be very clear as to, um, especially when it's a health order. Uh, I, I don't use any question. We, we quote the order and uh we implement it.
I think you could reverse that language and be more accurate. It's an intent with the governor and a directive with the county. And we're adhering to the directive of this, of Salt Lake County.
Well, a directive is not an, an, an order. A directive is just, I, I would like you to do something. I guess, and that's very different than what the county, sorry, tally, but with the Cali, with the county aside, which is, this is a law. You must follow it, and if you don't follow it, it will be enforced.
Let's adhere to the law. Let's adhere to Salt Lake County's order.
Well, I think that's, that's, that's what we should be doing. I mean, it's either a, it's either class B or class A, depending on if it's a first or second offense, but I think all the comments are valid. I think that we do need to be very sensitive to the language, especially when it comes to an order, it shouldn't be, should be black and white. It should be very clear. And uh, if it's not, then we need to do a better job with that. But uh, we're kind of running out of time. Uh, any more comments on that issue? Okay, hearing none, uh, we need to move back to the agenda and item number one, and I kind of stepped over that too quickly to staff reports because I wanted to kind of get that out of the way. Uh, we need to review the business meeting agenda that you have before you. We have of course, the, the welcome and the pledge, uh, we may do that anyway. We have two proclamations. One is uh celebrating Arbor Day, which we do every year, and in some years we've had a special activity. Obviously this year we will not do that. Uh, we just have the proclamation. Uh, you have those before you. Uh, my intent is not to read the whole proclamation unless somebody would like me to or has a question. And we also have a proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is something we've done each year and is supportive, that worthwhile cause of preventing child abuse. Citizen comments, uh, do we have anyone who has sent in comments? If so, we'll hopefully know just before the meeting and we'll read those into uh, the meeting minutes, uh, hopefully attach those. Okay, we have several action items. The first one is uh the resolution adopting and amending our policy to allow us to hold electronic meetings. Anybody have any questions about that? I think that's pretty clear. Item four-point-two is a resolution approving and ratifying uh, the twenty, uh, well, it's ratifying declaring a state of local emergency in our city. So Tim or Shane, do you want to address that at all and provide any clarification?
I, I, I can address that. You want me to talk about it now?
Yeah, go ahead and just give a little bit of clarification real quickly.
Just real briefly, one of the main points of this is the declaration um provides a, a variety of things that allow us to en- enforce more and, and request funding from the federal government. But the main point with this also is that the declaration is for thirty days. And um, a- also with that, um, if it's gonna be renewed for longer, the council has to um, do that uh, and, and provide that action. And so this resolution um does that um because we feel it's gonna last longer than thirty days. And so that's a big part of what, uh, the need for you to approve this resolution.
Is there a end date on it?
Um, it's effective until it's terminated by the city council. So we would bring it back to you um at a point when we feel like it, it can end and you would have to do that.
And let's just make sure we get that on our to-do list so we don't have one just hanging out there for us. All right, thank you. And uh, related to that and related to Christine's question, I understand uh, either this Thursday or Friday that Mayor Wilson will probably be extending her order. So uh, it's a good reminder to make sure that uh, when we send out any announcements, that language is clear. Thank you. Item four-point-three.
Sorry, Mayor, just one thing I forgot to mention. I don't know if anybody's, was listening to the Lieutenant Governor's um, speech today about COVID nineteen. I thought he gave some interesting statistics. I didn't know if any staff were also listening to that and if for, should we be communicating any of that to our constituents? I feel like that's great information that we as elected officials get, but I, I feel responsible that we should be disseminating it, but that's just my opinion.
No, I, I, I think that's a very valuable point, and as the mayors, we meet uh each Friday. There's some interesting statistics that are supposed to be coming to us this week. One of those includes a heat map which shows where the number of virus cases are within our valley, et cetera. Also, some of the modeling statistics to show where we are and where we would be if we were not instituting social distancing. So I think definitely where we have some statistics like that, I understood we were already putting some of those on our website, but we may wanna do more, so, so a good point, but I sure support that. Item four-point-three uh is an amending and restating an interlocal agreement with Murray City regarding the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail. Tim, is there anything specific about that? Tim, is there anything specific about that or who's doing that?
Matt, you want to address that?
Yeah, this, we have an existing agreement with, with Murray City for the park and ride, the West Park and Ride there in front of Porcupine. If you recall, this is the, this amendment will add to a legal description for the trail that we'll be building between Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail and the West Parking Lot.
Any questions with that, anyone? That's good progress. Glad to have that moving ahead. Item 4.4 is a resolution accepting a bid and approving a contract for, I think is that same trail? Is that right?
That is correct. This is the same trail.
All right, if there's no questions, item 4.5.
Sorry, Mayor, just really quick. Matt, you don't happen to have that picture real quick, do you? Or maybe you could send out a, a picture tomorrow in the email. I'm just going to be curious where the trail is going to actually go.
I, I will send it out to you, but it's going to be right along the edge there in front of Porcupine. It's taking up part of the road and making it fit in there.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4.5 is ratifying agreement with the state of Utah for installation of electronic vehicle charging station here at City Hall. It's, I think our cost is just under $2,000. Tim, do you want to speak to that or someone else?
Mike Johnson's going to speak to that.
Yeah, thanks. So this is a rebate program through the State Department of Environmental Quality. We've been working with them for a while on this. This would enable us to install a kind of double charging station. So one pedestal that serves two parking stalls in the City Hall parking lot. This, this rebate is a reimbursement agreement. So we have essentially with this rebate, two years to do the work and then submit for the reimbursement. And they will reimburse up to, I believe, $1,900, which, which lowers the overall cost of that. I do have some additional information. I can either share that now or in the business meeting if you'd like.
What's the total cost of installing the charging stations?
So I'm going to share my screen quickly and I can show you that. Let me know if, if you can see this. Okay. So we've, we've done a little research, our department has, and Sam has been helpful in this. So we've determined the, the estimated monthly electricity cost of the cost added to the city on a monthly basis is about $60. You can see on the right side of the screen here, there are two rebate programs. One is through Rocky Mountain Power for about $1,300 and another through the Department of Environmental Quality for about $2,000. So it makes the total project costs about $2,000. Without the rebates, it's actually about $4,000. This is, this shows the location and the type of equipment that would be installed at City Hall. There was conduit run to this location when the city was constructed. So we would just be pulling it up from that, which is why, why it's there. And any other questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for anyone? I'm excited to see it happen. I may eventually have to get me an electric car. Okay, hearing none, just one little follow-up comment. When we were talking about the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail, I, I think we communicated this to everyone, but did get a call from Salt Lake County, from Holly Adams, just a couple of weeks ago, that because of the, the virus impacts on the county's budget and the fact that probably the vast majority of Salt Lake County Park and Recreation's budget does not come from the general fund, but from track funds. And with the impact of hotels and car, all those things, that, that fund is going to be depleted. They've frozen all track requests that have not already been, who's not yet submitted for reimbursement. Therefore, our track request, it was approved a year ago for repairs to the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail and the wayfinding signs that has been put on hold by the county. We're not allowed to proceed, just as an FYI. Okay, with.
Mayor, it's me again. Just a question.
Please.
If we went forward with that on our own, maybe this question is for Tim. Is that, is that stimulus money that we could then request back? Or are you, or you could have a, maybe the question is, are you going to have a presentation of all the project, shovel-ready projects that we could potentially get reimbursed by the, through the stimulus package? And then the total amount of that, and then I guess follow-up, would this be included in that? And we could at least get it done and potentially get reimbursed?
Yes, this would be included in that and we will have that information for you. I don't have it tonight, obviously. But as we go through the budget process, we will have the shovel-ready projects that we can look at and hopefully get some stimulus money for.
And that's an important discussion right there on that project because one thing that should always be at the top of our list when it comes to funding is anything that has a liability issue. And on these, that specific trail, we've had several complaints about damage to the trail because of roots and things. And so there's a liability question that will need to be evaluated, but good comments and feedback. All right. Any further questions on the business meeting coming up after the, the work session? Okay, thank you. Moving back to the, the work session. Item 2B is our tree ordinance, something we've been anxious to see for a while. So Mike Johnson, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And my intent tonight is to introduce this to you. This will come back to the council for a full, much more technical discussion after it works its way through the public process. So my intention tonight is to kind of share where we've been with this and then kind of detail a quick summary of what the ordinance is trying to achieve, answer any questions I can, and then we'll bring it back to you when, when we're ready to, to come back to City Council. So I again, I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I froze for a second. Okay. So just a background, this, this started as a council priority, I believe in 2019, to look at a tree or.
We lost your audio, Mike.
Mike, I think it froze. Your computer froze or something.
I apologize. Not sure what happened there. Okay, so can we see this again? Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I apologize. It got disconnected again. So in essence, this is a, an ordinance that regulates primarily trees in public rights of way and in public places and also regulates park strip standards. So in terms of how the park strip can be improved, what type of material can be planted there and, and maintenance and upkeep of that. So here's a quick timeline of where we've been. We're going to start it as a 2019 city council priority. It was then brought to the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee and discussed there along with Barbara Gardner, who's a city resident and also an urban forester. And she promoted the idea to the committee of the benefits of a tree ordinance. That, that led to ordinance research and analysis of our current city code, as well as additional meetings with Ms. Gardner and other urban foresters. I think we had an urban forester from Salt Lake City and some from, you know, the state of Utah that we, that we met with to, to kind of talk through best practices with and recommendations and how best to implement this. We use that information to draft an ordinance and, and the ordinance in its current state is, is still a draft. It's working its way through the process. This involved internal discussions and continues to involve internal discussions. The, the next step for us there is to really sit down with public works, police, recreation district staff to, to get their feedback and recommendations and make sure we're implementing everything and being mindful of all city departments. And this was originally introduced conceptually about at the same level of detail to the planning commission in February of 2020. A draft was then put together and, and scheduled for public hearing at the March 2020 Planning Commission. No public comments were received. Actually, nobody even showed up to comment on it. However, the planning commission had some feedback. We continue to refine the ordinance and we will be back in front of planning commission actually next week with an updated draft. The planning commission, when, when they feel ready, will make a recommendation. As this is new legislation, it will then come to the city council, at which point we'll be back in a work session to go through the actual ordinance in detail with you, answer questions, get feedback, and then take that through the, the final steps of the approval process, which is public comment and a, a final decision. The general objectives of the ordinance, number one, are to address the, the council priority that was set last year. But, but realistically, what this does is it, it allows us to manage and better regulate public trees, particularly in the public right-of-way. And I would add park strip to that as well. So regulate the maintenance of existing and future park strips. This includes defining who is responsible for maintenance of these things, establishing design standards for, for park strip landscaping, hardscaping, what materials are allowed, which, which are not. Also developing a, a potential list of trees that work very well in public rights of way in those narrow spaces that, that don't become maintenance issues. Also establishing a list of trees that, that should not be considered for public right-of-way planting. And it includes a lot of language aimed at tree preservation, encouragement to plant trees and providing resources that people need if they're interested in planting trees in the public right-of-way in that park strip. And then establish many technical development requirements. And this would include when trees are required. That would be new construction or complete redevelopment of a property, new subdivisions, that kind of thing. How to protect trees when properties are redeveloping. And it also gets into four projects that go to the Architecture Review Commission, having the ARC analyze a site and the existing trees on a property to see if there's a way to preserve them before any, any site grading or demolition is done. This also establishes a process for enforcement of unpermitted tree removal or damage to those trees or park strip areas. And I believe in the packet, you have a previous draft of the ordinance and you can see in there, it, it's pretty widespread. It adds new provisions to the ordinance, but it also modifies various sections of the existing ordinance in an attempt to, to better regulate this. So this is, these are some pictures and I'm, I'm not going to get into whether they're good or bad. I think that's fairly subjective. But what this demonstrates in terms of the park strip right now is that we have no current standards for how to finish out a park strip. So you, what you see is, is kind of what you're seeing on the screen here. We, we see this in places where, you know, maybe maintenance is lacking. We see all these types of things as well, where, you know, you've got just a lot of variety in how that park strip area is finished and maintained. So you can see, and like I said, in our ordinance right now, there is no language that restricts certain landscaping or hardscaping in a park strip area or allows others, really all someone has to do is get a, a right-of-way permit, which is just permission to work in the public right-of-way. And, and they are kind of free to choose how they want to improve this. We also don't have an ordinance for, for the development of a new home to add any street trees. The only place we require trees right now is in new subdivisions, when new subdivisions are developed. So again, you can see we have a variety of different ideas of what works well in a park strip. And it's kind of, you know, just street to street and property to property, very different and inconsistent. You see some create overgrowth that, that may be hazardous, may create nuisances, may create site visibility issues. Others, you know, this, this is an example of a tree that's planted in a, in a park strip that, you know, that is well maintained. And this shows an example of a few different options. And, and we don't want to prescribe exactly what a park strip or street trees need to look like per se, but establish good guidelines to use when redeveloping these areas. So you start to get a consistent and high-quality feel across streets. You can see here from property to property, you've got one property that shows grass with a tree planted in a mulch area, shifting into some, some evergreen trees in rock area. And I think both have a certain appeal. This is another example on Dolphin Way. You can see one side of the street has street trees. The other side does not, and it creates kind of an inconsistent look. Additionally, the, the street trees here maybe aren't the, the preferred type of tree and seem to be creating a vertical clearance issue that would require maintenance. So the, the aim of the ordinance is to establish consistency. Number one, to, to work to develop a type of street tree canopy along these lines where you have a more consistent look. And number two is to develop standards for the park strip, for the finished material, for the landscaping that balances people's, you know, right to choose how to improve those areas, but also establishes certain materials and certain practices that are prohibited, which would be a fully hardscaping those areas or paving them completely. But also giving people options and actually in the ordinance right now, highly encouraging the use of water-efficient plant materials and, and, you know, maybe a partial use of hardscape that is actually permeable, so water can still drain into it. But that establishes a more consistent and higher quality look. We've done a lot of research on the benefit of street trees in an area outside of curb appeal. It has an effect, a positive effect generally on property values. Planting the right trees in the park strip can help avoid future issues with sidewalk lifting and, and maintenance responsibilities of the city. And also it actually can have a, an indirect effect on road maintenance where you have the shade canopy. So you're not seeing the extreme temperatures on roadways fluctuate quite so severely from day to night in the summer hours. So that's a really broad overview. Again, this, this ordinance is fairly wide-ranging. But the overall intent again is to provide guidance where guidance hasn't been provided in the past by the ordinance to develop, you know, networks of street trees, to make sure we're requiring these when new homes are being built, properties are being completely redeveloped, new subdivisions are being created, and to add some consistency and some, some expectations for maintenance of these areas. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. If I can't answer them now, I will take notes. And when we come back to you, I will be happy to provide an answer at that time.
Matt, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
The question I have is obviously there's the implication, being able to do this in a new subdivision is much better than a existing subdivision. Is there a list of trees? I know we've had some real problems on Highland Drive going down that way. We've got a canopy there that's a problem for higher-profile vehicles. And I think it took out almost all the sidewalks, do you know what I mean? On the east side of Fort Highland Drive going north from Bengal, or from Fort Union.
Yeah, so part of this ordinance is establishing what trees, what types of trees should be allowed. And, and that's where our research and our meetings with urban forestry experts have been very helpful. There are a number of other cities that have these ordinances. Cities generally tend to take a varied approach. Where we are right now, and this is subject to change based on planning commission or council recommendation, is we, we know of certain tree types and species that work very well. So essentially they, they will work in almost any case, provided you have the adequate four to five-foot park strip. We also know of numerous species that do not ever work well. So tree types that should absolutely be prohibited because they create issues like you're referring to. But there's a middle, there's a big middle where some trees might work well and some places they might not work well and others. And that's where we have language in the draft ordinance that the city, you know, it's okay to propose that type of tree. But we will consult with a a designee, an urban forestry expert, to to essentially review proposals for types of trees that are not listed as allowed trees to determine if it works, if it's recommended. You know, we don't want to be so rigid that we're missing an opportunity for a tree that works well. But we also want to have that careful review if if it hasn't been thoroughly vetted already.
Have we had any instances where someone is is dictated to them how to do it if they've gone out of bounds on it? Because I've had a few people that said, I didn't even know, you know, I know it's a right of way. But some people have complained a little bit about their, they're basically dictating to me how to maintain it, different things like that is if can we get some clear language so that people know that have existing properties that maybe could in the future, maybe change that in the future in a positive way?
Yeah, thanks. I think that's one of the big intentions of this ordinance is right now that is not clear anywhere. There the the expectation is that if you're adjacent to a park strip or a sidewalk, that general maintenance is your responsibility as a property owner. This ordinance states that more explicitly. And that also includes those standards. If you're going to do work in your park strip and you haven't done it already, here's the the mix of landscape and hardscape. Here's the type of materials that are not allowed. Here's what is allowed. If you want to plant trees, here are trees that are allowed. Here's how far apart they need to be spaced, you know, that kind of thing. Where we don't have that guidance right now in the ordinance, that's that's what we're trying to address with this.
All right. Thank you, Mike. And I think you stated that you'll be bringing this back to the council to review it in a little bit more detail later time as well, correct?
That's correct. I didn't go through the ordinance line by line. I will come back after we have a recommendation from from Planning Commission and we've had further discussions with Public Works, with police and with the rec service area. Once we have an ordinance that's ready for council consideration, we will be back at a work session. We anticipate that's probably you know, in the next couple of months, we're, the Planning Commission could potentially make a recommendation next week. So we're just kind of waiting on that at this point.
All right. Thank you. And I know one of the issues I'll be wanting to address, Nat, is inappropriate tree removal or trees that are removed that shouldn't be for a particular reason. All right. Thank you. We only got about 20 minutes.
Can I, I can I have one comment?
Sorry, Scott. I didn't see your hand there yet.
Um, I mean, I'll be, I'll be, there's a lot of emphasis on the park strips, which I understood. I, my impression, at least from the initial things, was this was going to be a lot broader as far as keeping trees generally throughout the rest of the properties. I guess the first question is, does it address that elsewhere? You know, trees too close to the sidewalks. You know, the same as what Doug said, I'm I'm very concerned about that. A lot of that has to do with the fact that I'm in a subdivision that is extremely flat. And every tree that got planted anywhere near the gutter or any, let's see, not any sidewalks, but any of the gutters, basically, the the flow, there's nowhere for that water to flow. And so I would, is there anything that keeps those types of trees even back from, I guess, the gutter system as well?
Yeah. So so we know we have areas in the city that don't have the conventional park strip and sidewalk. It's just kind of a large park strip with no sidewalk. That is still city right of way. So this ordinance would still apply in those areas. In terms of trees on private property, we do have the language in there currently that the ARC can consider what to do with with trees and tree clusters on on gateway redevelopment projects. We also have provisions in there that a private tree, if it's not well kept or if it's creates a hazard, can be considered a hazard tree, which becomes a nuisance that the city can can enforce. But outside of that, we don't go much further than that with trees that are fully on private residential property.
So if I want to take down a beautiful tree on my property, I can do that. I don't have to replace it or anything like that. There's nothing in there along those lines.
That's correct. In the current state.
Thank you.
All right. We just have a couple of minutes. We've got a couple more items before we go into a closed session. Next item is item C under two on your business meeting agenda. And that's proposed in a local agreement with Salt Lake County for the park and ride maintenance at the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon, just below the water treatment plant on the north side. Tim, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah, we talked about this for a few minutes in the retreat and then the county provided this agreement to us and requested our consideration of this. I told them, this was prior to the COVID-19 the the intensity of that issue. I told them at the time we would need to discuss this in a work session prior to it going to the council for consideration. What it is, is the agreement would be for the two park and rides in our community, $6,500 per year is how it would impact our budget. The agreement's for two years and automatically re- renews for another three years after that. And that that's, that's the focus of that. I have communicated with them my concerns related to their methodology. I indicated that in my my letter. Their methodology is basically they're located in your community, therefore you should pay. The other cities in Salt Lake County are not required to pay, but because they're located in our community, they want us to pay. That's their methodology. Like I say, I express concern. I need direction from the council on this. If you want to pursue this, we will need to have you consider that in an upcoming council meeting. Once we go through the agreements, agreement right now shows that it starts January 1st, 2020. So it's already in place. So I would like your direction. If you want to move forward and consider this formally, we can bring it to you formally in a business meeting. But if you don't want to pursue this, I can convey that to the to the county.
Yeah, maybe you can share with the council who else is a part of the agreement and who else pays for that space besides us. I know other municipalities don't, but I understand there's six or eight other groups who pay into that.
Yeah. So the groups are, they're owned by Salt Lake County, UDOT, UTA, Solitude Ski Resort, Brighton, Snowbird and Alta. Those are the entities that would be contributing, contributing to these park and ride lots. Most of these entities already are. In fact, all of them are, except for us. The county wants us to be a contributor.
Mayor, have, have you brought this up at any CWC meetings? It would seem like Holiday, Mill Creek, Salt Lake City and others should be, you know, if we all put in a thousand, maybe that lessens the pain because I think as Councilmember Bracken said in our budget meeting yesterday, it's hard to swallow if we're not, if our citizens aren't using it. But if it were spread out among other cities, maybe that's a win, similar to what we did with the UTA buses, just just a thought.
We haven't brought that up with CWC yet. They're they're struggling determining what their priorities are with the impact of the virus and their funding mechanisms and they're eliminating all projects going forward. And that'll all be finalized in the next 30 days. I have mixed feelings on this one personally. My original feeling was in opposition because it's kind of a regional amenity. But then with the county's collaboration, working with us on both the property acquisition along Wasatch Boulevard, as well as the proposed Ferguson Canyon overflow and potential dog park. And with their support of so many other things we've done, it seems like this might be a good time because it doesn't seem to be a material amount to show our willingness to cooperate back. So I kind of go back and forth. I always can move it to the CWC. But again, there's, there's a lot of cities who are not members of CWC who also would probably participate a thousand dollars, i.e. Holiday. So I I have mixed feelings on it, but I do want to recognize that the county is, will step forward in the last couple of months on some major pieces of our funding needs to do some capital things we're we're wanting to do. So.
Mayor, I have a quick question. Because of the parks and different things that the county is trying to gift us, quote, quote, and some of those maintenance issues, I'm afraid we're gonna be getting buried a little bit if we take on too much. I'd love to see if we could get somebody else to participate with this. I know there's give and take here, but I'm a little concerned about the the parks that will be given, being given, but there's a pretty high maintenance issue.
Well, those are good questions and the council gets to to decide. The two parks they want to give us are municipal parks. They are small. They're eight or nine acres. They should have come to the city originally. And so I I think that's, that's a budget question. And and a philosophical question. As a city, are we in the parks business or not? So I'm I'm biased. I admit it. And I think those are two amenities that our citizens always rank as one of the highest priorities is those parks that are, again, small in size. They're neighborhood parks are not regional parks or not even community parks. They're really neighborhood parks. And and I think those are less of a, of a challenge in my mind than the funding of the park and ride, which is clearly not something our residents would use. If we're going up the canyon, we're not going to park there. We're gonna stay at our home and go.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of finding the $75,000 for the two parks and the the 6,500. It is a smaller amount, but it is, there's kind of a a conceptual issue there that, I mean, it does rub me a little bit the wrong way, but it's, you know, is is the $6,500 worth making that big of a of a pushback?
So so mayor, is, would there be, would there be any interest? And I I know Tim, you you meet with the mayor of Holiday and Mill Creek occasionally, but I mean, isn't it worth just the ask, even if it's outside of CWC to say, hey, we have these regional amenities, these parking lots, the ski areas? We all know that your citizens probably use it more than ours. How about like kicking in a thousand dollars? Or is that just more hassle than it's worth to get in a local agreement for such small amounts? But I, I just bring it up because.
Yeah, I I hear what you're hear, what you're saying. I think if we wanted to take that approach, it would be more appropriate for Mike Reberg, the county's representative, to present it to those cities based upon his analysis from the county that it's a regional amenity. You know, just like, you know, UTA and UDOT and Solitude and Brighton and all those people participating in it. Why Holiday's not, why Mill Creek's not, why Sandy's not. But I think it'd be more appropriate to ask Mike if he has been to those cities and if he's gotten a response. I can always support him in doing that. But he would have a a more objective higher view of how that works as a regional issue.
Or or why, why, did he, did he say why he did, why he didn't go back to Solitude and and the ski areas and UTA and UDOT to ask them to just put in another thousand dollars? Just, it just seems, I get where you're coming from, the city, the county's being very generous with us and some of our asks and 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 we need to work with them, but and $6,500 is not that big of a deal, but this is Councilmember Bracken said 75,000. If that's the right number to maintain parks going forward, is it? It's probably a bigger bill or bigger deal, but I I don't know.
I I think we can always go back and talk to Mike Reberg and negotiate because of those other entities everyone else is doing like UDOT, UTA and Brighton, others, they're all doing probably three or four times the amount we are as a city. If you look in your packet, like, you know, UDOT's putting in 22,000, UTA 22,000, Solitude six, well, Solitude, Brighton, Snowbird, Alta, all are doing 16,500. So ours is the smallest of all the amounts, but I I can't, I can't tell you I don't agree with everyone saying, I don't think this is our cost. It shouldn't be our cost. Even though we have fully funded a park and ride through grants and things just below that, along across from Alpha Coffee and things like that. So we've been in the business of looking at park and rides. So it's, there is some precedent of where we've participated. It doesn't seem like a material amount to me personally, but I, yeah, so I got mixed feelings.
I I assume that our portion of that, I mean, it almost for the amounts sort of there, it's almost like kind of a keeping it pretty fee. And I guess under that basis, I could understand that we would like to keep it looking nice because it's in our city. I guess the question there is, do we have any say over that maintenance? Or does that just go into a black hole? And is it just strictly up to, I'm assuming the county is the one that upkeeps the the park and ride? We don't really have that much input on it?
Tim, do you know? I know it includes a restroom.
Yeah, the the county, the county does the maintenance on that and and they would just continue on. I think they do get some assistance from UDOT, but the the county is the primary organization doing the the maintenance.
I would also assume that when EIS is complete and Wasatch Boulevard is complete through that intersection, a lot of that may change. I, if I could rationalize and impact, is it whenever we can put cars somewhere and keep them off Wasatch Boulevard and out of that intersection, you know, that's a good thing?
I mean, I I would agree with that reasoning myself and just and so everyone else's hears this with the the parks, which is kind of under that same timetable. They've said that they give them to us last January. I, we had the discussion briefly yesterday about the water rights that are attached to those parks. And I just, I I think it's very important that if we're going to be getting the land and the other facilities that go with the park, that we need to get the water rights in the city's name as well.
If there are water shares, we definitely should. I understand that we as a city have several shares of water been donated over the years. And even just in the last six months or year, we've had another share to donate it by individual lives not too far from Mill Hollow Park.
Well, in this state, you probably can't have too many on water rights or water shares. There's, there's a couple of individuals that would disagree with that, but I think, yeah, if they're there, they need to come over as part of the of the the deeding.
That's a good point because they're like gold and they're extremely valuable. And what you could do, you can give them to Salt Lake City Water and it covers your water bill for a lot.
I'm done. I'll shut up now.
So do we have a position? Do we want to get a little bit more information from Mike Reberg and bring it back? Or or are we okay to proceed? We can go back to Mike and see if he's talked to other cities?
I wouldn't mind having that conversation, but it sounds like Tim's made that attempt already. So if that conversation is going to have mayor, it probably needs to happen at your level on more of a political side than it is on the administrative. But, you know, your your comment about keeping cars off Wasatch, I think we can all agree that there's some benefit there. It would be nice to maybe have some input as to when and how it got maintained if we're, you know, because it is right in our city. Maybe that's a little piece we could add to the agreement, at least if we can call and say, you know, this really needs to happen, that it actually gets taken care of. I mean, a couple of things like that. And then, you know, I could be supportive of it as is, but if we want to talk to the the county again, I kind of think that's probably something that would have to happen on the the, the, excuse me, the political side with you, man.
I could definitely talk to Mike Reberg, know him well. And I can also have a conversation with a couple of my fellow mayors. We've been talking a lot over the last few weeks about budget implications. So it's, it's appropriate. I can do that and we'll do it immediately and then then go from there.
Mayor, I would just chime in that I I trust your discretion. When you're in those conversations, if you feel like this is a gesture that would go a long way, then I got your back.
Thank you. And again, my justification is because of a half million dollars that I think you've all heard about that is coming to us to facilitate one open space. And then the support of the dog park application are are two big ones that we want to continue to build on. And track has been very supportive in the past. So but I I think it's, it's always worth questioning one more time to see if we can push that out. And so I'll, I'll work with Mike Reberg and with with Tim and talk to a couple of mayors. So. So with that direction, that's what we'll do. Thank you. All right, let's move to the next item. Police vehicles lease discussion. I know Christine has asked to put this on the agenda for some discussion and I think we've all supported. And whenever we need to have discussion for clarification, it's, it's a valuable thing to do. So, Tim, I'll let you introduce it and let's go to there.
Yeah, I, I sat down with all of you in January and, and actually sent you a memo and talked through this memo on our process on the lease of police vehicles, which was an administrative matter. We evaluated a variety of different things. I outlined in that procurement lease, number of vehicles, types of vehicles, sustainability options and, and overall cost change. The, the good news with all of that is we feel like there'll be a seventy-two thousand dollar per year savings for us with what we are proposing to move forward on the leases right now. That includes equipment in it. It would have been ninety-seven thousand without the equipment of, of savings each year. In that memo, I talked about sustainability options that we would look at, different options with the provider on vehicles that are electric or hybrid in the, the lease option. The big challenge for us is as we met with them, they had issues. They, they went and evaluated it, looked at government assistance rebates and foreign manufacturer rebates as well, and they didn't have that. And so they were not willing to look at a buyback program with the, the, those two options with the vehicles. So anyway, we didn't pursue that. I can communicated that to you. Councilmember Michael also talked about the possibility of looking at the chief's vehicle and looking at an electric vehicle for that as well. One of the things that we have to look at with all of these, with a lease program, it's completely different. If we were buying them, it would be, it would be a whole different ballgame as far as what we could do. We have to have vehicles that meet terrain standards and national police pursuit safety standards and also are cost effective. And so I guess the question tonight is, and, and we can talk about this, is if we look at a different vehicle for the chief, we do have concerns with going back and, and pulling back on that order, but it would come out of the general fund and it would be something we'd have to purchase rather than the lease option. That's my introduction. Happy to talk about it.
Um, Tim, if I understood what you said correctly, there is an issue, and I, I didn't know this, I own a hybrid. You're saying at the end of the two years, they, they're not willing to do the same kind of guaranteed buyback that they do on a standard vehicle at this time?
Correct.
Well, I guess I didn't know that when I bought mine, but I bought it and I'm planning on keeping it a long time. But that, hopefully they'll, they'll get that changed. I think you also mentioned there is possibilities in two years' time that there may be some more vehicles that are, that would fit that and would get the buyback. And I guess if they don't buy them back, then it's up to us to sell them.
Chief, do you want to address that?
In our agreement with Ken Garf, it's a guaranteed buyback. So they, they promised to buy back the, all the vehicles at a specified number. So that's never been an issue with us selling the vehicles. It's just they have to agree to do that. But the hybrids, they just haven't had any experience in knowing what those numbers are after two years and whether it's a business model that they can make money on. They make money when they lease us the vehicles and they make even more money when they buy them back because they're buying back a fleet car that they can introduce into the public sector, you know, that they're buying back at a, a great value. And they just haven't had that experience with electric vehicles. They don't know whether that fits their model or whether there's money to be made in that, and that's their apprehension. If you remember, I mean, we had, we looked at these, we have absolutely no objection to, to looking at some of those cars. You know, especially the hybrids. And a couple of years ago, we were looking at Tesla came to us and made us a great offer to take one of their vehicles, but one of the council members at the time didn't, I think that was, the optics were good. But at the time, they offered to put in a supercharging station for us for free. And I think the total cost to the city was twenty-five grand at the time. That, that offer since been removed is off the table. But we did look at that and certainly have no objections to driving those cars.
I wonder if Scott Georges would take a minute and tell us financially how this whole purchase, not purchase, whole lease package has come together compared to what we've done in the past, to where we're going forward. Is this, so is this equal or better than what we've done in the past? Scott?
So, right now, this is not a year that we have to replace a lot of equipment. Every, every time that we do a new lease, we have to purchase some equipment, but some equipment gets reused. And then after a four-year period, then that equipment becomes old and less reliable. And so we, we, we get new equipment at that point in time. Plus, sometimes the style of vehicles change enough that it just doesn't make sense to put that on the new style of vehicle as well. The lease that we're currently in, for the vehicles that we currently have, included new, the purchase of new equipment. So our, I think the current year amount that we have in our budget is like four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. Next year, it's four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. It fluctuates just a little bit year over year. And then the purchase back amount is about one-point-one million on the vehicles that we have. And that repurchase amount is kind of the, the balance that's left over on, on the purchase of those vehicles. Where if there wasn't a purchase agreement in with, or repurchase agreement in with the dealer, we would need to cover all of that cost and then kind of cross our fingers as we go to the auction or wherever we go to dispose of the, the vehicles on our own. And we could win in some cases and we could lose in other cases. And I think that's what Tim has been emphasizing, that the dealer has been unwilling to give us pricing on a lease on the hybrid vehicles or electric vehicles because they don't have enough experience to know what the value is going to be of that vehi- vehicle after two years. And so that's why they have been hesitant to give us pricing on those vehicles. We could go down the line of those vehicles, but we would not have the guaranteed buyback aspect of that as we move forward and, on that.
Thank you. Other discussion from the council?
Where are we in the queue, Chief? Are these cars ordered or are they starting to get equipment on them now? When does that begin?
There's, you know, it takes about, we need about five, six months leeway or lead time to get these cars done. That's why we started back in November with the process and, and brought this to everyone. And these cars were, the, the list was identified and we thought solidified in December. And that's when we ordered the cars, December, beginning of January. So the, the cars have been ordered, the numbers, bin numbers assigned, and they're in manufacturing stages now. Albeit, there is a slowdown this year because, you know, the, the virus and GM had a strike and various other things that were beyond anyone's control. But the cars arrive and then you, we have to strip the existing cars and then outfit the new cars. And the vendors who put on the graphics, the radios, the light, lighting systems can only handle a few at a time. So those take a few weeks to, to accomplish that switch over, even after the cars arrive, to get it all done by, by July one. And that's when the new agreement's supposed to take effect and we get the old cars back.
So we, do we have any cars currently here that are in that process? Has that started yet or is that for next month?
I guess that was the short answer to your question. No, there are no cars currently here. They're all in the pipeline, but we haven't taken possession of any vehicles yet, but we didn't expect to. We normally don't see the cars until about May. And then they start coming in and then we're in a rush to get them stripped and equipped, you know, May and June. And then make the switch in July, sign the new contract.
My question, maybe Shane knows, how do we do this? Because I don't know, have we signed the contract yet to do all this?
I can, I, we can't hear you, Shane, you, you speaking? I can address that. We haven't signed the contract. We're, we've got to put together the financing options, which Scott is working on, and it will come back to you probably in May, most likely on the, the contract with it.
I would like to propose that we find a way to factor in the environmental impact. Because I think we've all noticed since quarantine that the air quality has tremendously improved in the valley. And as much as it's a financial decision, we need to find a way to factor in our air quality as we make these kinds of decisions.
No, I, I, I think that's, that's, that's very reasonable and that's one of the reasons I was, I mean, Chief Russo knows I was in his office multiple times, hounding him over where we were getting our gas when the refiners were coming on with the tier three. But I, and I think having our entire fleet, having their emissions reduced by up to eighty percent, I think that's a big win. I certainly think it's probably a bigger net gain than one or two all-electric vehicles. I mean, I don't know how to quantify that, but that just kind of seems having thirty-eight or forty vehicles. I don't know what the total amount is that are all running, you know, seventy to eighty percent cleaners being a big, huge win for the air quality and the environment.
You know, we have to have certain vehicles that meet our needs, both to be able to respond to calls in the terrain and the weather conditions in cold lights and also be able to be pursuit rated and sustain crashes and the type of work we do and certainly big enough to put people in them, you know, whether that be a prisoner or a victim of the scene of an accident. But we do order specific vehicles with added features on them, such as F-150 trucks, go to, you know, the EcoBoost engine. So they're as efficient as they can get and they go into a battery-only mode whenever the vehicle's stopped. So they, they, when the car is idling, they'll, they'll go into the battery-only mode. So there'll be improvements such as that that are, that are helping along the way.
I, I've been able to speak to a dealer about this. I asked him about this. He said the residual on these vehicles, these electric and hybrids are much lower. And so that's the reason that they're not able to do those. Not just the uncertainty, but the residual is, is lower. And that's why they, that's why they don't want to guarantee those.
I, I, I don't agree with that fact, but we could debate that another time. Can, can you help me understand, Tim, is, is Garf, Ken Garf the only vendor out there that we can purchase vehicles from? And, and what was the comparison of the other dealers? That, did, did we get a quote from another dealer for the vehicles or that's it? It's just Garf is the only one on the state contract?
Chief, do you want to answer that?
Yeah. There's other vendors on the state contract, but we did put this out for bid a couple of years ago. And Ken Garf won that, that bid. In fact, I was surprised that Larry Miller and many of the other big dealers had no interest in, in bidding the contract. Ken Garf is familiar with it, they like it, they, they won the bid. So we have tried, but Ken Garf came out the winner again, and we've actually been very happy with them. They're easy to work with. And it's been efficient for us and there haven't been any bumps along the way with getting our money or getting the vehicles and it's, it's been a good relationship.
I, I guess I, I'm not sure. You said that you went out to them a couple of years ago. Do you mean you went out to them again? You went out for bid in December, November timeframe again, and, and they won it again? Or they won it two years ago, so we just went with them again? I didn't maybe understand your response.
No, I, I believe it was four years ago that we went out to bid. It might have been six. And, and they won the bid. We have not done it since because we didn't get anybody else to respond. Now, there was one national company that had an interest in it, but the other big car companies locally or even in the region had absolutely no interest in doing this. They would just rather you buy the car. So there was, seemed like there wasn't any reason to go out to bid again. It's on the state contract and we get much of an interest the last time.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still confused. First you said, we went, we went to them two years ago and then you said four to six years ago. If you don't know, that's fine. Maybe you could send me an email later and let me know. When was the last time we went out for bid? What's the process? I guess if we continuously go to Ken Garf without, and sole source it, and we have an interest in a hybrid or electric vehicle, I would hope that as our, as a customer of theirs, they would try to work with us and try to meet our needs. This was a request we had two years ago when I first started. It's a request I think both Tally and I felt very importantly about this year. And I guess I would say that before we go out for the vehicles, and I think, Mayor, this happened to us the last time, before we go out, we need to bring this up to council in a meeting and not in council communications. This is too important of an issue for me personally and maybe others, that I think it deserves the discussion in November. And I think, I, I'd be interested to know in November, when you're going out for this again, are we sole sourcing it? If we're sole sourcing it, we're their customers. We have requirements that we'd like them to offer us and they have two years to figure it out. I just, I, I don't think we're asking for a fleet of EV vehicles. I think we're saying there could be a couple of hybrid or EV vehicles we could add to our fleet. We're going to have an EV charger. We should, as a customer of Garf, we hope that they can meet our needs economically and affordably.
I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. We, the bid wasn't the, two years ago that we went out and, and did a competitive bid. There are several car companies that are on the state contractor. So they're not sole source. We can use any of those car companies. It's just they're not willing to do the type of lease program that, that we have in place. So we invited other companies to, whether they are on the state contract or not, to participate in, in the, in the bid process. And there wasn't anyone except one national company that wanted to participate and, and they were not competitive at all. Ford is putting out an F-150 electric vehicle. We're just waiting to see how that evolves and we are interested in that. As far as Ken Garf, they are, they're, they're great to work with, but they want a model that works for them too, if the numbers don't match up for them. They are not willing to do that. In the hybrid vehicles or electric vehicles, the numbers didn't work out for them, at least not at this time. So we, we brought this, I thought that we had brought this to the council. There was no nefarious attempt to hide anything. These, we, we put this spreadsheet out. We had discussions, we talked about, I mean, the numbers, types of vehicles. The council and the, Tim and Scott had a great deal of influence on the type of vehicles we ordered. In fact, we changed that list a couple of times.
You know, I, I, I agree. I think through my monthly or my weekly meetings with Tim, it seems like we were informed all the way through the process. I'm, I'm discouraged or frustrated at this point, but I respect the, the opinions and the concerns raised. The other question is, is this an administrative decision or a council decision? Obviously, it's a council decision when it comes to signing the contract. But administratively, you know, it's, it's not a sole source. It's usually state contract, which is legal and appropriate. Philosophically, there may be some debates we need to carry forward. I know Tim was extremely sensitive to the process and challenged many of the recommendations from, from Robbie going on and modified some things. So I think we're well down the line now. So the question is, does the council want to proceed with Tim's recommendation where we are? Or is there some other direction you want to go? I'm, I'm personally supportive of where we are with an understanding that we need to come back. And it sounds like I'm, we're back. And it sounds like we're backpedaling from a year or so ago, as Christine refers to, this is, this is a major capital expenditure and it should be vetted more thoroughly. I assumed it was in meeting with Tim because I understood that there were meetings with each individual council members through the process. So maybe that was wrong.
Well, I'm certainly in favor. I think what Tim and the chief have done has been great. I am still extremely pleased with the progress that we've made with the Tier 3 fuels and those, you know, we did a press release, but that's, that's, I think that's a significant win for air quality and the environment. And it's, and it's huge. I, you know, I, every time I tell somebody about that, they're like, really? That's awesome. The new 150s that do the battery mode, I'm familiar with that because my car does that and that's actually one of the greatest things about it. It's, and especially with police vehicles that idle, as much as they do, they need to keep things going, having them be able to do that for 10, 15, 20 minutes and keep things going without spitting out even the little bit of emissions, I think is a win. So, yeah, I, you know, I appreciate Tim and Scott and the chief for the work they did and they've done.
I also feel like I've been informed each time I'd meet with Tim, we'd kind of go over that. I was very happy with the savings that we've received. But the Tier 3, I thought that was, that was a real clincher because that, that savings on the emissions is incredible.
I guess I would ask again that, like I did, I think, two years ago and the mayor did as well, that when, that between now and the point where we start talking about this, that our, that we work with Ken Garf and encourage him to find alternative solutions, if that's who we think we're going to go with. And then I would request that rather than this be in meetings individually with council members, that we discuss this as a council and see where everybody, what everybody's thinking at that point before we dive into an order and purchasing cars.
And I would sincerely like to request that we have some kind of methodology, maybe an overlay, that Scott Juris could work with Samantha and come up with that environmental impact of our decisions and what it's costing the environment when we make a decision. I'd love to see something that we could apply to every budgetary decision.
I appreciate the challenges Samantha. I think that'd be interesting how she looks at that and with what energy efficiency with the new fuels and the, the impacts that these new vehicles have on environment. That's always a valuable thing and I think that's a role she can play. I, with respect to Christine's request, I think that's, that's a fair request that, for whatever reason, and I can take some blame for that, I assumed that, not assume, but the communication with individual meetings, that things were progressing fine and saw a lot of changes because of input that came from the meeting. So going forward, I think that's a valid, valid request. We just have to make sure that in our retreat, when we establish those priorities, that that's, that's made there clear. But any final comments on this issue before we have to adjourn in a minute and go to our, our, our business meeting?
I think we should always keep the variety of vehicles we have open for discussion, you know? If we can't, hopefully, when this comes up again, then maybe Garf and/or, I mean, because Garf does the financing. I mean, we purchased the cars on state contract. That cost is going to be the same regardless of where we go. But the, the financing method, you know, maybe that's a time where we look and say, well, okay, we're going to take a couple of cars out or we're going to take a few cars out or however many it happens to be, and we'll do those differently. If Garf or whoever does the financing the next time is not quite as comfortable with it, you know, we have a, you know, I, Chief, if I, I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I had heard that, you know, given the opportunity, would you be willing to drive that type of vehicle? You were amenable to that? I think that's great. There's certainly, not every car that we buy has to be a, has to be a patrol type. But I think that type in the mix is definitely something that should be up there. I, I think it's amazing that we had a $70,000 or $90,000 decrease in this cost year over year and an 80% reduction in emissions. I think that's just, I think that's a win all around.
I have no objections. You buy me whatever you want and I'll drive it.
Okay, real quickly, we have just a couple of minutes, but to Tim and Scott, you get the flavor of, of some recommendations going forward, both with looking at sustainability, environmental impacts, as well as communication with respect to the process. You know, one thing clearly is that even though it's state contract, that we bring some verification that we've, we've vetted that process with showing other vendors not interested. And a few of those things just to reassure the council and the public that we're getting the best we can for our dollar. So I'm not articulating that well, but I think you all heard the comments.
Yes, we've heard them and we're, we're willing to do that. I, next time I will bring it to you in a full council meeting. This was my first time in working with you on this. I thought I was communicating the way I should and providing you opportunity for input, but I, I guess that wasn't the case, so I'll do better next time.
I might suggest, I mean, if it's appropriate, I'd make a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can get over to the other meeting and get it set up for the, the public meeting. So if that's appropriate at this time, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we adjourn to our business meeting.
Before I take a second on that, just to remind everyone that after the business meeting, we will have a closed session.
Are we having the closed session now or no? Okay.
No, we can't have it now because we have a business meeting at 7:00. So do I have a second to adjourn?
I'll second that to adjourn.
Okay, so we moved in second and everybody can say aye?
Aye. So Paula, you'll cancel this meeting and start the other one for us to adjoint?
Sorry, I have to unmute two microphones. Yes, I'm gonna, let's all hang up and then we'll go to the business meeting link.
Okay, everybody, please, please call into the next meeting on your, on the link that Paula sent.